A very, very, very powerful special guest. Um Apostle O Sedi who will join us in few minutes, I think. Um and then also I'd like to apologize for my lighting, yo, there's no electricity here. So all the plugs are not working for my lights and yeah. But let's just hope that my devices won't switch off. And I'm literally just hoping that they won't switch off. But today we have a guest that's gonna be ministering for us. So you're not gonna be seeing lots of me, gonna be seeing lots of him. But let's just um fix the atmosphere, shall we? You know, let's just pray, let's share the life to as many people as we can. Let's double tap the screen, let's invite someone to come, invite a friend or two. Have your Bible ready, have your notepad ready and just have an expectant heart. The Lord is about to do a lot of things for us this evening. So please to share the life to as many people as you possibly can and we will begin. Amen. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus. Oh, thank you, Jesus. Why how you show, show me mercy? She make more. Thank you for your mercy. Lord, I'm amazed by how you show me mercy. She make more. Thank you for your mercy. Oh, we thank you, Holy Spirit. We thank you, Holy Spirit. We thank you, Holy Spirit. Just for the next few minutes, Wazalani, let's just pray, let's just begin to pray. Invite the Holy Spirit to be in our midst, you know? Let's just invite God to be with us as we're about to hear His word this evening. Amen. Let's just pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we give you all the praise and we give you all the honor. Father, we have searched over, but we can't find a God like you. Father, Lord, we have seen you walking with us in all types, types of troubles. We have seen you walking with us in all types of situations. And one thing that we can be rest assured is that every time, Lord, you will make a way for us. There's a song that says you have made a way. Where our backs couldn't hold on anymore, you were a God that held us. You're a God that kept us together. We thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your love, we thank you for the favor that keeps on surrounding us all the days of our lives. Lord, we know and we know that if it wasn't for your mercy and your grace. But because of your mercy, each and every day, it keeps on surrounding us. Each and every day, it keeps on reminding us that greater is he who lives inside of us than the one on earth. Father, we thank you for what we have, we thank you for the things that we do not have. Because the word of God says, oh, those who are weary and burdened in spirits, let them come to me and I, the Lord, will comfort them. This is us, oh Jesus, with the different situations that are happening in our lives. This is us, oh Lord, with the different problems that we have in our lives. We have come this evening to thank you, Almighty Jesus. We have not come here to ask, we have not come here to seek, but we have come here to thank you. We have come here to praise you, we have come here to exalt you, we have come here to honor you. I will definitely bless them. Father, Lord, we are bringing thanks giving. Everything that is happening in Greece, Texas, and all these fights that are happening against countries. We thank you, oh Lord, for having such a wonderful guest that you have planned for us. As he is about to speak, Father, Lord, we pray that may you speak through him in the name of Jesus. May he not speak from his mind, may he not speak from whatever that he thinks, but may he speak the things of the spirit, may he speak the things of heaven. May the angels of. Father, we pray that may you change the atmosphere. We may be connected through a digital platform, but let the Holy Spirit be with us in our rooms, in our cars, wherever we are watching this live form. In the name of Jesus, Father, we have prayed, be with us. I pray for everyone who has joined the life, I pray for everyone who's about to join the life. May you heal them, may you comfort them, may you meet them at their point of need. In the name of our Lord and gracious Jesus, amen. Amen, amen, amen. Greetings to you all in the wonderful name of our Lord Jesus Christ. It is such a wonderful day for us today. Um, we truly thank God for being with us, we truly thank God for keeping us. Um, as I said, I'm so sorry that my light is a bit, um, yeah, deka-deka ring, but that's because I, I don't have any electricity, this is a backup electricity. So please do not be. It's because that my light is not working. So, um, I thank you all for joining today and I believe that we're gonna have a wonderful time together. As I said, we have one of my prestigious, most powerful, most handsome, most everything brother that is with us today, Apostle O Sedi. And I, I see that he has already joined in, let's just gonna take his position in the next few minutes. Please let's share the life, Wazalani, to as many people as we possibly can. Make sure that as a person, like you, share the life to at least five people. That's a minimum, make sure you've shared the life to at least five people and let's make sure that we double tap the screen like nobody's business. So I'm just gonna allow my brother to take his position today as the teacher, as the minister, as the Apostle, as the man of God. So just if there were hands of applause here, I would literally press them, but I do not have them. Welcome, my brother, welcome, we, we, we welcome you in the wonderful name of our Lord Jesus Christ. We hope to have a wonderful time with you, amen. Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, man of God, thank you. It's a pleasure and it's an honor, it's a blessing to be here, amen. Uh, greetings to each and everyone that is watching us. And we're not just going to waste time, we're just going to go straight to the word. Ah, God help me, thank you, in the mighty name of Jesus, we thank you, speak through my mouth, oh God. Indeed, your word is a life, your word is light unto our path and a lamp unto our feet. And we thank you, may you speak your word as it is, may you use me as your vessel, because I am satisfied just to see glorified in the mighty name of Jesus, I pray, amen. Uh, our love for us to open our books in the book of Psalm, Psalm chapter sixty-two, verse eleven. Psalm chapter sixty-two, verse eleven. Psalm chapter sixty-two, verse eleven, and allow me to title my message, you have power in you. You have power in you, you have power in you. Am I able to be heard?
Yes, 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 we can hear you loud and clear.
Loud and clear. Okay, the book of Psalm chapter sixty-two, verse eleven, it reads as follows. God has spoken once, twice I have heard this, that the power belongs to God also to you. Oh, God belongs messy, for you render to each one according to his work. Allow me to title my message, you have power in you. Many people in this time, many people in this generation, they have thought or they have been told that as a child of God, for you to receive power. Power lies on the head, power lies on the hair, power lies on soap and power lies on water. But allow me to tell you today that none of those things produces God's power on earth. They go around rushing for, for things that are tangible to receive God's power. Whereby the Bible says, power is within us. In the book of Genesis, it tells us very clearly in the book of Genesis, chapter one, verse twenty-eight. It says, for God said, let us make men, and he blessed men, and said, let them produce, let them, let them have dominion, let them rule on earth. Therefore, what amazes me is that already God has already placed a picture that power lies in us, but we are able to go all out and go seek for tangible things so that we may receive God's power. Whereby he has already placed it visibly in front of our eyes. My brother, that they go around trusting people and believing people because of what people are saying about their DNA. Whereby God has already said it in his word that you are my son, I have made you with my own image, you are God yourself. There's a song we used to sing. But allow me to, to change that song because of, it says, whereby there's a person that looks like God that was made in his likeness, which is you and me. And the same power that God possesses, we also possess. Therefore, many people, they go around seeking for tangible things so that they may receive God's power. Whereby already God have planted it in us. He said, let us make men in our own image so that they may do, may, may, so that they may rule and have power, blessed is them. Therefore, in this generation, in this generation, what, what we seek the most, it's God's power. That's why we're able to even go out and try to make magic, because you want to see power. In the book, i- in the Bible, it tells us when God ascended to heaven, it tells us very clearly that he said to his disciples, stay in Jerusalem until the Holy Ghost comes upon you, then you will receive power. In the Old Testament, the glory of the Lord used to visit, but in the, in the New Testament, it shows that the glory of God lives in us, power lives in us. The power of God in the Old Testament used to stay in the ark of glory, now it lives within us, in us. Therefore, when we want to produce what, 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 the same power that God has, we don't have to check the tangible things we have, we don't have to check what pastors are saying, we don't have to check, we don't have to wear anything so that we may receive power. Power is already within us, power we al- we already possess within us. We already have power within us. There are many people, um, uh, whoever who, who's in the life, who knows this, or if you're doing it, allow me to say it, but please forgive me, but it's the truth. There are many people that you check on TikTok that they always post videos of them praying, having a prayer show, my brother. Having a prayer show. If you can go and ask those people, what does the prayer show stands for? What, what is it that it produces? Others, they will tell you that when I'm praying, I cannot pray without wearing it. Because it brings that, uh, uh, it brings that atmosphere when I'm, when I'm wearing it, I'm able to pray. I can able to hear myself in the spirit. But allow me to tell you that there is nothing that is on earth that can produces God's power. There is nothing that is tangible or that you can see with your eyes that can produces God's power. Already God has planted the power in a man. Already God has spoken power in a man. And in this life, for me to be able to produce God's power, it's by me spending time with God, not spending time spending on money for me to see miracles happening, for me to see people being delivered so that I may say it's God's power. Because God's power, it's not, it doesn't go through a process of you enabling to take out a million out of your pocket and pay people so that they may give you power. Already power lies in you. There's a prophet in the Bible that says, um, I, I forgot the name, I forgot the name. The Bible says, they, they got into a point whereby they started to, 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 to come up with a competition whereby they wanted to see which God is powerful. With the Philistines, the Bible says that that prophet went and when he went and he said, okay, fine, I'll give you the night for you to pray to your gods. Let us see if your gods will produce fire above to the sacrifice. What I love about that prophet, when, 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 when his time came up for him to produce fire from above so that it can burn the sacrifice. The Bible does not tell us he went and, that, the Bible does not say that he went and pleaded with God that God, please, produce fire. The Bible does not tell us that he went and started to have a meeting with God that God, please, I don't want to be ashamed. I don't want people to say that you are a God that doesn't produce power. But the Bible says, he commanded fire from above. Yeah, whenever you recognize that we have power within you, you don't have to go around and spend time to ask God that God, can you produce power? You already know that power, power lies in you. You already know that you already have, you had the same likeness as your father. I cannot tell you that when. I cannot tell you your DNA whereby you already know who you are in Christ. That's why it becomes a challenge with people who are going to fight with people who already have experience whereby you have never experienced. You cannot be a girl that will go a woman, that will go and tell an, an old woman that labor pains are not painful whereby you have never received, you have never felt labor pains. Power lives in us. We possess power, we live in power. When we eat, power is in us, when we bath, power is in us, when we sleep, power is in us. That's why you are able to conquer every dream that you see. You see spirits fighting you in your dreams and you conquer it because power lives in us. If power was not in us, in your dreams, you would wake up and go fetch salt that were given by your prophet so that you may be able to conquer the spirits. But power lives in us. There is no man of God, there is no prophet that is able to, 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 to bring power or to, or to put power in a man. Because already we have power in us. When, when, when the Bible says, for my grace is sufficient for you, grace is not transferred, but you already have grace. The image of God, you already have it, the likeness of God, you already have it. Therefore, in the book of Genesis, in the book of Genesis, it says that, he said, let us make men in our own image so that they may rule and have dominion over every living thing that is on earth. It's only a person that has power that is able to rule. For a king to be able to rule, it's because he has power to rule. I cannot rule whereby I have not, I, I don't have the power to stand the challenges I'm going to face. In that ca- in that particular kingdom, I'm ruling. When the Bible says, I let, let them rule, it tells us each and everything that is on earth is yours. Everything that lives on earth, that is under the earth, that is on top of the earth, even each and every living creature is yours, including the weave you're wearing as a sister. Because it, it lives, it's on earth, everything that is on earth. As Christians, we go around believing people about what they say about us. Whereby the Bible already has told us who we are in Christ. When, when, when people said, when people say, how come can you be, how come can you be rich? Because we know in your family, you are poor. Tell them according to the Bible that he who was rich was made poor so that I may be rich. And each and everything that is in God lies in us. Allow me to put it like this, you are God on earth, you are a king on earth, you are here to rule. I cannot go around and tell people, don't possess your land whereby God has said, execute the land, multiply in number. It, it, it is already in the tablet, it, you can already see it, it tells you that you are a son of God. The Bible says, for my men are, for my people are perishing because of lack of knowledge. They go around believing whereby already the scroll is open that you possess power, that you are a son of God, that you are a child of God, that you are a king on earth. But you wanna go around and believe in people about what they have, their philosophies, whatever, whatever they think about you. Whereby God has already laid it before you. Sometimes, sometimes I used to think, because I love thinking a lot, I love thinking. Sometimes I wonder and think that I'm sure where God is when he sees his children wandering with things, struggling with things, that God has already conquered it for them. I'm sure God asks. Because already I have placed it, it's already in the, in the, in the public, I have already carried you. You cannot, you cannot go around worrying about what's something that I have carried you. You cannot go around and, and start to struggle with things where God said, you are rich yourself. Everything is in you, whatever you want is in you, whatever you think is in you. Whenever you see something, execute it, e- e- establish it, place it, it's in you, it's, it's in you. Power lies in you. There is no power you find out of a prayer show. A prayer show is just a material that you can even use to wash dishes, there's no power in that. The Bible tells you that you are able to move a mountain to another, to another place. How can you move a mountain? It's through a person who has faith and a person who has power. It's only power that is able to produce things that are supernatural, that we have, that we are able to see, that we know that stars are able to stand, that they're stagnant in one place. But how can we able to navigate, how can we be able to go and fight where God was, where Jesus was born through stars? Whereby we know that stars, they stay in one place, but they become a navigator. It's only power that is able to produce those things. It's only the power. You were born with power. You were born with power. By the way, but power cannot be taken. Power cannot be taken. A king that is, a king that goes and misuses people, it's because he has full authority and power. That's why he's able to misuse people. One thing about power, we cannot take power, we can only take the glory out. Then the power will be the one to make people to suffer. That's why many pastors are able to preach some things that are not of God. Because they, they know that they have power, but the glory that maintains the power is not there. It's not there. Everything that is on earth, it's yours, possess it, have power. Stop asking people that I don't have, I don't have something that I love, I don't have anything that, that I can say is a career. Everything lies in you, you have everything in you. Everything is in you. There are things that many people that, about, 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 trendy, say you like TikTok, but you are not supposed to dress like this. You are not supposed to wear your wigs, you are not supposed to put on makeup. God has already placed it, you have authority over it. How can I come and tell you something that is on earth that God has said you have authority over it? Then I say you should not wear it, whereby God has said you have, oh, you have authority over it, it's yours, it lives on earth. Righteousness is not about wigs, righteousness is not about makeups, righteousness is not how you live. How righteousness is all right, it's not about what you watch, it's how you treat yourself, right standing with Christ. Everything lies in you. You are a king on earth, you possess power. Everything lies in you, you possess power. Allow me to say this point, I only had two points. When I prepared, the one I just said it, that you are a king on earth, you have power. Power is seen through how you rule on earth, how you live on earth, how, how you know yourself in Christ, then you able to see power through people who rule. My second point, stop explaining, just allow supernatural interference to take place. That's my second point. Second and last point, stop explaining, allow supernatural interference to take place. There are many people who have tried to make people to understand. There are many people who have tried to go around and try to make people to, to, to know and think out of their thick scalp that no, I am God, no, I am a child of God. Stop explaining. Let, let the power, let it show itself, let it reveal itself. Stop explaining. In this time, in this time and season, in this generation, until we may understand who we are, it's until we won't go around and believe people about what they are saying about us. This generation has, we, we can say that this generation is, is possessed. But allow me to say it, this generation is not possessed, they don't know themselves. But allow me to say it, this generation is not possessed, they don't know themselves, until they know themselves. Then you will see the change. Until they know themselves. Until they know their DNA. In each and everything that, that has already been placed, it has been placed, each and everything has been placed before you. The word of God is, it, it is a light, the word of God is the one that tells us who we are. For you to get to a destination that you don't know, you need a navigator, you need a map that will show you that, okay, you have to turn left, you have to turn right. For you to be able to use your power that lives in you, you live by the word. You know, you have to, by, the, the word is the one that tells you that, how do you use power? The word is the one that tells you that whenever it comes to this situation, this is how you have to react, this is, this is how you have to speak, this is how you have to, you have to show yourself. Because power is the one that produces everything. I have been watching news, many, I've been watching news, people are killing people because of insurance. People are killing people, police, things like that. For a, for a police to be able to kill a person, it's because of, they know that they have power. They know that they have power. A man who's a husband, that is able to abuse a woman, it's because he knows that he has power. But for you to use that power in a good manner, what is it that you have to use? What is it that you have to listen to? What is it that you have to, to be obedient to? Which is the word of God? Which is the word of God? In order to see things manifest, be able to walk according to the word, so that it may show you how to use power. Let us not overuse power, but let us learn the word, so that we may be able to use power. Let us be able to use power in a good manner. You know, you cannot go around and explain and try to put, and try to, to, to call a meeting just to make people to understand that you are God. You can't go around and try to make people to understand that you are, you are a worshipper. I'm a true worshipper, allow the power to be the one that reveals itself. Allow the power to be the one that shows itself. When Moses came down from the mountain, glory did not ask Moses that, Lord, Moses, can I cover you? But glory manifested itself through Moses. The power that was given to Joshua, it did not ask Joshua that, Joshua, can I live in you? But it had to reveal itself. In the time whereby the, the, the children of Israel were fighting five nations and five kings. Power had to reveal itself through Joshua. Stop explaining. Stop trying to make examples, allow power to be the one that reveals itself. In the book of Daniel, chapter three, verse, verse sixteen to seventeen. The book of Daniel, chapter three, verse sixteen. Stop explaining. Stop explaining. Stop explaining. The moment, the moment you want to go around and explain, it's like you want to justify yourself. And you, it's like you want to, to make people to accept, whereby even Jesus himself was not accepted. If Jesus was able to go around and tell people that I am the son of God, and they did not accept him, do you think that they will accept you, even if you can tell them that yesterday you killed a goat, you killed a lion? Would, would they accept? If Jesus was not accepted, that he is Christ, the ruler, who, who has the kingdom in his shoulders, do you think that the world will accept you? Stop explaining. Stop explaining, Daniel, chapter three, verse sixteen. Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah answered and said to the king, O Nebuchadnezzar, we have no need to answer you in this matter. If that is the case, our God whom we serve is able to deliver us from the burning flames of, of the furnace. And he will deliver us from your hand, okay? But if not, let it be known to you, okay, that we do not serve your gods. Let it be known. Let it be known. Verse sixteen, I'm repeating it again, listen to it. Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah answered and said to the king, O Nebuchadnezzar, we have no need, we have no need to answer you in this matter. Stop trying to answer people who don't get your character, who don't get the power you possess. Stop, just stop. If they don't see it, let it reveal itself. They do say, but if not, let it be known to you, okay, that we do not serve your gods. They will come with opinions, they will come with things that are tangible, that says, hey brother, Sean, we see that your God is not working, come and take this. Tata, let dynam goes, I'm telling you, stick to God, even if you may not see him now, stick to God. Allow power to be the one that reveals itself. Allow power to be the one that reveals itself. I just think, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah, I'm sure their hearts was, was like, yo, 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 I wish, I wish, I, I wish he could save us. But it's because they understood who they are, they understood the power they, they possess, then they were able to say, even not, he does not take us. And let it be known. Sometimes you have to put your God in a test. Test your God. Just sit down and make a decision that, God, I seek a person who is big. Just for me to think that, that you are the one in me, so that your word may not be, may not make me mad. Just, just use me. Test me, sir. Test me. I see that. Him. And see that the power may not work for you. Just test it for once. Many times, many times in my life, every day, I, 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 I make sure that I go and test. I, I go and test. And see, what is it that he's able to produce? You will never know that you have power until you test that power. Then when you think that it's your mind. No, it's not. No, it's not. In each and everything that God has, you have. Therefore, stop explaining, stop trying to answer. Me as an apostle, ah, ah, sometimes I used to, I used to just sit down and try to answer, but there will be a dinner and, ah, man, shut up. Shut up and back off, allow God to work, shut up and back off. Allow the power to reveal itself. By the way, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah, they did not pray. The Bible says, when everyone knelt down, how, how did they see that Shadrach, Meshach did not bow to their God? That they have stood, that they have built so that people may worship. How did they see that they did not bow? Because obviously, it shows that there were the only three people who were standing, everyone bowed. Everyone bowed. And for them to show that Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah, they did not pray, it tells us that after then, they took them and they gave, they said it to them unto them, that, why, we have stopped, come worship, let's see, worship. And they said, we're not going to worship. We're not going to bow. In that period of time, there were, the, the, the king was arguing with them. In that period of time, they were not praying, they were not asking God to reveal power, they did not ask God to reveal power. But because of, they knew the power they have and the identity. They know their power. They know their power. They know who they are, they know what they possess. They may change their names, but they did not change my identity. They may tell you that you are poor, but they did not touch your identity. They may tell you how stubborn you are and stupid you are, but I'm telling you, they did not change your identity. Know who you are in Christ, for you possess power. You possess power. What you facing, but I'm telling you, that's not who you are. That's not who you are. They stood, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah, they stood and said, we're not going to bow. Even if we die, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure because they were men, just like I and you. They, they were in the flesh, just like I and you. I'm sure they even said it, ah, namas ngong, I see shake. Ah, 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 we, we're not going to bow. We're not going to bow. What made God, check this, woo, check this. At the time of Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah, Jesus was not on earth. After the fall of man, when it came to sin, that's when Jesus came. But when it came to Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah, it was, it was an emergency that God has to. But because of this is an emergency, I have to be the blazing fire in the midst of Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednikah. At that time, Jesus was still, was still in his throne city, but it's because he saw there were three men who knew their, their identity. It was an emergency that I had to go up and show up and save them and deliver them from the hand of the serpent. It was not Jesus' time to come on earth, but it was an emergency. Allow me to tell you, until you know yourself, there will be an emergency that will make God to be like a firefighter, that will rush from heaven on earth to attend to your challenges. I'm telling you, until, until you know yourself, until you know yourself, he will be like, he will buy, ah, Barcelona, until you know yourself. It will be an emergency, yeah, 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 freak, a freak, a freak. People are, people are, are standing, saying that we're not going to bow. People are saying we're not going to show up, people we're not, we're not going to serve. It's an emergency, show up, we know your time is, 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 is a time whereby you have to go and reveal yourself through a virgin Mary. But now you have to come as a blazing fire. We know that you have to go through the process of the cross, but now it's an emergency, you have to show up. Because of there are three people who know their identity, who know the power they possess. Who know the power they possess. Until you know yourself. I'm going to make supernatural interference. I'm going to, I'm going to deliver my child, I'm going to deliver my son, it's because you know yourself. Because you know yourself. Because you know yourself. There's a song, there's a song that we used to sing long time ago, that says, consuming fires, sweet perfume. He had to come as a consuming fire. It's an emergency, that was not his time for him to show up, because there were three people that knew themselves, he had to show up. He had to show up. Until you know yourself, he will show up in emergencies. Well, if, if, the, the moment you open your phone, in the lock screen, it has that, that button near call that says emergency. Emergency. Emergency, I be, I, I, emergency, it's not cold. Our, our phone, if there's nothing that is happening. You don't call police because they're there, you, you don't call them if there's nothing that is happening, there is nothing you do not know. But you call them because there's something that is happening, there is something that you know. That's when emergency comes. I'm telling you, until you know yourself. Until you know yourself, there was an emergency that had to took place when there was a man who shaved his hair, whereby he renewed that the power light in his hair, oh God. He prayed, holding the pillars, and he said, Lord, remember me. The moment I said, Lord, remember me, there's a, there's a government, there's a side that I touch, because I know myself. Then the Bible says, God gave him power, then he pulled the pillars, in the same way, then everyone died in the temple. Until you know yourself. There was a man, there's a man who knew himself. Who went to God, when an angel, when the angel Daniel appeared to him and he said, that in this time you're going to die, then I, that guy went and questioned God, that God, I have went before you, how can, how can, how can, can I die now? Whereby I have lived according to your will, he knew he went with a statement. I have been faithful to you, I cannot die now, because of, he knew himself, then God added more fifteen years. That's an emergency to people who know themselves. That's an emergency to people who know themselves. He questioned God, that God, I cannot die now. He questioned God, that God, I cannot die now, I, I have been faithful, I cannot die now. Eh, eh, it's, it's not my time, it's not my time, it's not, there are certain times whereby you have to question God. And say, God, and show him the blueprint, that God, I know that you want me, you want me to die, I know, I know, I know. But I, I can feel it, this is not my time. This is not my time. Until you know yourself, you have power in you. Power does not lie in the hair, power does not lie in the chains, power does not lie in your nails, but power is in you. Until you know yourself. You, you will conquer each and every battle you face in life. And by the way, by the way, a person that knows himself has no time to go. Whereby he knows that tomorrow I have an interview. He has no time to stress, he allows power to show. A person that knows himself, whenever he shows up, then he runs to the prophet, that, hey prophet, don't remember, there's a man that used to serve you, the challenges are dead, back, back home there, there are people who are promising to take my kids. Then the prophet answered, the, the prophet asked the question, that, hey woman, what do you have in your house? And he said, I have oil, oil, oil and flour. Then he said, go and borrow dishes, how can I borrow dishes whereby I already have debts? But it's because she knew, she had to obey and go and borrow other bowls, so that he may be able to pour the oil, whereby he knows she had other debts to pay, that they were made by his husband. But we see supernatural interference happening. Something that we know that is oil, the moment you pour oil, if it's, it's a cup that is in this, in this. But we see a person who knew herself, who knew that my husband used to be faithful, and she went and said, no, 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 no. Ah, ah, you have to do something, you have to do something. It's an emergency, my kids will be taken, you have to do something. Know yourself. Know yourself. Know yourself. There are certain demons that you, you will never go around and say, fire, fire too. That will just say, please, don't touch us, better take us out. Same thing as Jesus, when they got to the other side of the lake, when he said to his disciples, let us go to the other side, in the book of Matthew. It tells us that when they got there, there was a man who was, who used to live in the graveyard. Then the spirit said to Jesus, please don't touch us, but the only thing, just take us out. You, until you know yourself, you won't fight the devil, but the devil will just say, okay, take me out, it's fine. Because he knows the power you possess, he knows it. He knows the power you have. The Bible says, there were four men who were sitting, there were four men were sitting at the gate, I forgot the name of the gate. They said, tho, those four men, they, they had leprosy. The Bible says, they said, they, they took a decision in themselves, for themselves, that we cannot stay here and hunger. Let us better go to the, to, to the camp of the Arabs. And go, if we die, we die, if we come back living, we come back, because they took a decision and they knew the God they serve. The Bible says, when they came with their horses, all the people were leaving. All the Arabs, they ran away thinking that there comes a battle. Can you know, it's only four men who knew their identity, who knew their power, and they told themselves, we cannot stay here with hunger. It's either we die or we leave, but we go in there. Until you know yourself. Until you know yourself. You know who you are in Christ. You know who you are in Christ, until you know yourself. Allow power to reveal itself, as I am closing. Say, same show one hour, I'm great, I used to, I used to, I, I, I don't preach for one hour, I only preach for thirty minutes. But it's because this is a message that God has for you, that you have to hear it. Allow power to reveal itself. Allow power to reveal itself. Allah, let, let, let it not be people that will say that I saw brother Sean healing. Someone, because he laid his hand on that person. But wherever you are, speak and allow power to reveal itself. I just wanna think, two thousand years ago, when Jesus was still on earth. Did, did, whenever he do, whenever he, he went and healed people, did he just go and said, okay, let me lay my hands on you? Fire demon, out, out, out. Things that are happening today, did he do them? Jesus would, would use to appear and he said, hey, take, take your mat and go. The woman, the woman who, who, who was bleeding for twelve years, she took a decision, she knew that I have faith, she knew. And she said, I'll go, even if there may be a crowd, but I'll go and touch the hem of his garment. God did not speak and say, power, reveal yourself. Jesus did not say, I want to pray for you, but Jesus just, she was walking, then she felt, man, there is power that came out. Allow power to come out, allow power to reveal itself. Jesus went, he said, nah, man, there's someone who touched me, and they said, God, Jesus, Jesus, Jesus. But a person who knows his identity pulls the attention to himself, so that God may deal with the challenges she or he has. Because of, you know yourself. Whereby God has already placed it very clearly who we are in Christ. You even leave your purpose that you are called by God. Because of brother Enigma said, you should not put on makeup, you now live in the gift that God has blessed you with, that will produce millions for you, because of you went and started believing things. That God said, stop believing in them, yeah, here is my word, believe my word. I'm telling you, opinions will come. Suggestions will come. But it's only a person who knows himself that will never downgrade, he or her God to a lower level. Because he knows himself, he possesses power. Therefore, wherever you are, wherever you're listening, at the sound of my voice. In this time, this is the second month of the new year, twenty twenty-five, we still have more months to go. I'm telling you, until you know yourself, these months, you will conquer like the something that, 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 that you use every night. Can you know, you know that you have power. Because you know that you have power. Therefore, wherever you are, stop trying to, to believe people, stop trying to trust people. In fact, don't put your trust, put your trust in God, the Bible says, do not lean on your own understanding, trust no one. It tells you, trust in the Lord with all of your heart. He will be the one that will reveal, he is the, the, the owner of the power, he's the one that reveals the power. Therefore, lean in God. Ay, ay, brother Sean, this will happen, it's fine, trust me, darling, you have been believing them. You keep this stress. Or I, I, maybe, maybe if I can get a boyfriend, maybe I'll be okay, I'll, see, he will show me love, he showed me comfort. Hey, just know yourself. Just know yourself. Just know yourself. Then with doing that, I'm telling you. You will run the race with a smooth path. With a smooth weave that comes from God, grace that comes from God, glory, grace that is able to break protocol, grace that is able to open doors that men have shut, so that you may not enter. But until you know yourself, power reveals itself to people who know themselves. Therefore, in everything, know who you are. And by doing that, you will see the hand of God, and may God bless you. Thank you, my brother, just for now, you can, if you can just close with a prayer and thank God for the word. Thank you, Lord.
To, to speak about, wow, what a powerful, what a powerful, powerful, powerful session that we had. Um, I'm not trying to add or to subtract anything, but there's something that you said that just can't come out of my spirit. Now he mentioned one thing, he said, sometimes the power in you activates the emergency pipelines of heaven. So that God or Jesus himself may come down and heal you himself. Let me repeat that again, sometimes the power in you activates the emergency pipelines. So that God or Jesus himself may come down to heal you. Not because, eh, 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 obukulega gakulu, not because, obu yasontwe nega kulu, but because of the power that you have decided to use. Ah, you know, sometimes it's not to go to, is not to go to, but it's because you haven't evolved the power that's inside of you. The question is, how do you evoke this power? Through faith, through authority. There's a woman, put to me in the book of, let me actually open it before he put. There's a woman that I love. Now the word of God says that when she was in the house, her son died. Then when she got out of the house, leaving the son dead like that, she went out. And the word of God said, the husband was outside, and the husband asked, we are, we want to know, this, I am Allah. She did not explain what was going on, because her faith was not in the people of the earth, but her faith was in God. As she was walking, she met people, goskazi is everything okay, and she answered and said, everything is fine. And when she spoke the words that said, everything is fine, that enabled the pipelines of heaven, so that Jesus may come down himself and heal the tab. Your faith is about to open the emergency pipelines of God. You've been praying, you've been fasting and all of that, but I wanna tell you something this year, that may your situation, may your power unlock the pipelines of heaven. Because of the faith that they have. But no, he said, nah, 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 because of the power that these people have realized in themselves. May your faith unlock the power in you. If it's a job that you need, may the power in you enable God to descend himself. It all lies in the realization of your power. It all lies in the realization of your power. Until you realize the power that you have, mountains cannot be moved. Until you realize the power that you have, sicknesses will keep on coming into your life. But the moment you realize, hmm, hmm, this power in me, ah, the power that I have. I know my time for a second coming is not come yet. The woman that was bleeding for twelve years. May the faith that you have release the power from God to your doorstep. May the power that you have release the healing of God from the heavens to your doorstep. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. May the power invested in you open the emergency pipeline. There's a word that I love. But it's because of the power that is invested in you. The word of God said, every child I have given them power and authority. So no man, we accept, no man, we accept, but for the fact that there's power. But because of the power that was inside of them. The power that's inside of you. Yes, I have killed many Christians, but Lord, no, 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 no. There's power inside of him. May the power inside of you enable the devil himself to say, the power that's invested in me. The power that's invested in me. May you realize the power that you have. Hmm, this is your thunder. May you realize the power that you have. Ah, this is your colleague. I don't know what's happening in your life, but there's one thing that I'm sure about is that the power inside of you will be able to give you that treatment. Ah, not anyone else. But the power that's inside of you will heal your mind. The power that's inside of you will expand your business. The power inside of me can do it all. Those prophets, they're like you, same people. They eat, they drink, just like you. We are all humans. We do not acknowledge the power that we have. Let's go to him. Realize the power that you have. Before they can even prophesy to you, may God prophesy in you because of your, your, your level of wanting him. Realize your power. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus. Oh Lord, we have not seen a God like him. We thank you for today's teaching. You are realizing, you are making us to realize the power and authority that you have placed inside of our blood cells. You are making us to realize the power that has been invested in our hearts, in our flesh, in our minds, in our souls. A power that cannot be taken by anyone else. But a power that comes from you. It is no longer I who lives in me, but the Almighty God. May we realize the power and authority that we have. May we realize the power that has been invested in us. Father, I pray, each and every person under the sound of my voice. May they realize their power. Make us to realize our power. No matter how long or how much time it takes, make us to realize our power. I release a hand of blessing unto each and every person who join the life. Cover them, heal them. We bless Apostle Osedi, a wonderful great man of God that you have brought to us to dispose of. Heal him, give him whatever that he desires. May you keep the fire burning in him. The glory doesn't belong to us, but the glory belongs to you. The honor doesn't belong to us. The praises don't belong to us, but the praise belongs to you. We thank you for using him in the name of Jesus. Amen. As I close, something that I realized that sometimes God does not bring problems in your life for you to gain perseverance and stuff and all of that. He does that to do that. Trust me. But one other thing that makes God to bring problems in your life is because he wants you to realize the power that's inside of you. Now, as a child of God, we know and we believe that there are some certain things that we cannot be doing, right? So if I'm sick, if I'm sick, so God will bring sickness to you knowing the fact that you not go to other people, but you will lean on him. Now he's gonna bring the situation so that you realize that the healing does not have to come from other people, but the healing can come from you because you are like God. So if I'm saying mountain move, it's no longer me alone who's speaking. It's me and the power of God. When I say that sickness you are late, it's no longer me who's proclaiming, but it is me and the power of God. When I say, there's no poverty that has been placed in my life that will prosper. It's no longer me just saying that because but it's me and the power that I possess. I am not just speaking J because I heard other people saying it, but mine, I am saying it with faith and I am saying it with power. Realize the power that you have. In Jesus' name, amen. What a time, what a service, what a moment. Thank you to everyone who joined. Um, thank you to Apostle Osedi for allowing God to use you like that, my brother. You know, many people, they don't really say, ah, I'll preach for my Allah, but it's good that we still have people who are willing to share the word of God, you know? Yeah. So thank you so much for allowing God to use you this evening. And I believe that your message has touched not only me, but each and every person that was here. So please, let's come tomorrow. We are having a session on WhatsApp. Um, just text the people here on the, on one of these people on TikTok to give you the link and then you join the link or you take the link on my, um, bio. I'm gonna upload this, this live. If you didn't get the whole of it on our YouTube channel, make sure you do get it. Jesus to the world Holy Ghost experience. And next time we are having Mola Bo preaching for us. This is amazing. This one deserves a hand of applause. We are having Musa's label that's gonna be ministering for us right here on this platform. Make sure you are here. And I'm gonna make it a point that, um, I'm gonna preach once a month, then the rest of the days it's you guys. So make sure that you prepare yourselves because you are about to be here. When I text you and say, today it's your turn. It's your turn. So please let us all be ready. Let's just be ready. Next week or not wait next week actually, tomorrow we are having a special guest um, on WhatsApp, on the WhatsApp group, on a WhatsApp call. And then on Sunday we are having Ossistandu, I can't wait. We're having Ossistandu on Sunday and on Wednesday we are having our very own brother, brother Manoba. And on Sunday, that other Sunday, we have a new guest from, from the box. A new one on Sunday, that other Sunday. So please make sure that you tune in. Please make sure that you subscribe, you follow to be updated on what's gonna happen and all of that. I still also have to deal with this lack of electricity in the house. There's no electricity buffet to this light. It's even gonna switch off in a few minutes. But if you wanna join the WhatsApp group, just text me on TikTok or text any of the people that are here. Sedi, you can text Sedi, you can text Oratile, you can text Kukuma Zwi, you can text Root Africa, Justin. You can text, uh, yes, text those people to put you in the group. Then I'll see you guys on Sunday. Have a wonderful night. I love you. God loves you. Amen and amen. Shalom.